Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Planning Commission for today is the, what, the?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, thank you, of December. Almost Christmas, isn't it? And we'll ask a call to order at this point and then move on, ask for any public comment on any items not listed on the agenda. And seeing none, we'll move on to the first item, which is adoption of the Planning Commission minutes for August 13th, 2007.
Brushing your memory, I'm sure.
It was kind of, it was. So let's go on here. And do I have any comments?
One for me. No comments for me.
Commissioner Dunn? No? All right. Very good. Then at this point, we'll go for a motion.
We move to approve the minutes for the Planning Commission meeting August 13th, 2007.
Second?
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and we're still going to call this verbally, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm not sure if we're putting the motion in or not, but we're still, the motions are as read into the record, so if we're trying to type things and...
ID here, so we're good.
Right. So it's all verbal, and then we'll still do it that way.
Very good. All right. Who's going to call roll?
Oh, sorry.
That's all right.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner LeJoule?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Carrick?
Very good. Thank you. And we will move past the next agenda, our next agenda item, and move...
Oh, are we going to be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll go back to here. Sorry, we got lost here a minute.
Okay.
All right. Very good. And move on to the next item, which is the conditional use and site plan design review permit CU-09-01, SP-0907. Oh, that's it. And at this time, I'll read our information for the public. Staff report has been prepared for the application and has been made available seven days prior to this evening's hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to the applicant's proposal. If anyone would like me to read those criteria, please let me know. The staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report, along with any written comments and input that has been received through the public notification process for the application. The quasi-judicial hearing procedure the commission will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code, and the hearing steps are shown on the chart to my left on the wall. Anyone wishing to speak should fill out a slip and give it to the planning staff before the hearing. All letters, reports, or pictures must be marked as an exhibit by the planning staff before they can be submitted into the record. For the public record, please begin all testimony by stating your name and city of residence. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria, and if you believe any other criteria apply in addition to those, address in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria, and explain why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. A person does not have to testify in order to submit written materials of any length while the public record is open on each application. However, any party wishing for a continuance or to keep the record open must make that request before the public hearing is closed. If the Planning Commission makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue which you may wish to appeal must have been raised for the commission's consideration. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient specificity and accompanied by statements or evidence so that the city and all parties can respond, the issue will not be adjudged appealable to the State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, Oregon revised Statutes 197-796 requires us to announce the following. The failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damage in circuit court. At this time, I'll ask if any commissioners have any ex parte contact, conflict of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare.
I don't.
No? Nor do I. So the procedure tonight will begin with a staff report and any correspondence that may not be in the current application, and I'll pass it over to Tony.
Thank you. You and the Commissioners, Chair Paul. I'll be presenting the staff report from conditional use 0901 and site plan design review 0907. The applicant is Clearwire LLC, and the owners of the site are Oregon City School District. The applicant is requesting approval of conditional use and site plan design review permit for the installation of a wireless communication facility on the roof of the Jackson Street High School. The project includes antennas within a new faux chimney and a three-by-three-by-five-foot equipment cabinet on the roof of the school, and antennas located on the exterior of the existing chimney on the south-southwest side of the building. The high school is located at 1306 12th Street. It's identified as Clackamas County map, two south, two east, 32 BB, tax lot 3800. Clearwire is a wireless provider bringing high-speed internet access to residential and small businesses' customers. As part of this application, they've requested the installation of the wireless communication facility on an existing support structure, that being the school roof and chimney. The project includes four antennas and two microwave dishes within a new faux chimney and a three-by-three-by-five equipment cabinet on the roof, and two antennas approximately 42 inches tall by nine inches wide and one microwave dish approximately two foot in diameter located on the existing chimney. The new faux chimney will be constructed of fiberglass and will have the same dimensions as the existing brick chimneys on the roof, and will be molded and painted to match the existing brick patterns. The equipment cabinet will be screened and painted to match the other existing facilities on the roof. The subject's site is zoned R6, single-family residential. It's surrounded on all sides by other properties that are zoned R6, a single-family residential. Directly to the west-northwest of the existing tax lot is the boundary for the McLaughlin Historic District. The proposed project is not located in the historic district. The facility, the school, is not a designated historic building. Thereby, the requirements of the historic overlay district are not required to be reviewed or applied to this application. It is a conditional use. 1756 of the Oregon City Municipal Code talks about the conditional uses, and what we do is refer to, back to Section 1780, which is the Communication Facilities section of the code. And specifically, we're talking about the co-location of additional antennas on a support structure. And as I stated earlier, per the definitions, a support structure includes an existing building. So this is a conditional use in the R6, single-family zone. Second criteria is that the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering the size, shape, location, topography, existing improvements, and natural The new faux chimney will measure five foot eight inches square and extend 10 feet above the existing penthouse. The fiberglass chimney shroud will have the same dimensions as the existing brick stack. The fiberglass will be molded and painted to match the existing brick pattern. A screen will be provided around the equipment cabinet and painted to match the other elements on the roof. The existing roof of the school is approximately 39,000 square feet. Where the antennas are being located, they're in excess of 100 feet from any of the property lines around the site, and the installation has been designed in such a way as to either completely camouflage the antennas, completely screen, or color in such a way that they match the existing chimney, for example, on the south-southwest side of the property. The topography is flat. There are no natural features located on the property. There are no overlays. This proposal does appear to be appropriate considering the size, shape, location, topography, and natural features of the site. The third criteria is that the site and proposed development are timely considering the adequacy of transportation system, public facilities and services existing or planned for the area affected by the use. This proposal won't have any impact on the existing facility, public facilities. It's not going to impact the transportation system, water, sewer, sanitary. It will, in fact, be providing a needed service in that it will be providing additional access to wireless facilities in this neighborhood. And specifically, this site was picked to address a deficiency in service in this area, and that it's the only non-residential building within a large residential area, and that it has sufficient height to, can be accommodated because of the height of the existing building necessary to provide coverage of that area. The fourth criteria is that the proposal will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary use. All the surrounding properties, primary uses, are R6, single-family residential. We did not find any reason why the installation of these facilities on the roof would substantially limit their use as residential facilities. The proposal satisfies the goals and policies of the comp plan, which apply to the proposed use. Section 11 of our comprehensive plan deals with public facilities, and our policy 1175, maintain and enforce the cell tower ordinance, adopt, support, and encourage innovations reducing, camouflaging, or screening cell towers. In this case, the applicant is complying with 1780 of our municipal code, which was adopted. Specifically, there's a section addressing the co-location of antennas on support structures, and the applicant has proposed to camouflage part of the facility in the construction of the new faux chimney to be compatible with the existing facilities on top of the existing Chapter 1762, Site Plan and Design Review is applicable. O5O are our general development standards. Once again, one of the criteria deals with that the size, shape, height, and spatial and visual arrangements of structures, including color, should be compatible with the existing surroundings and future allowed uses. We will just go back to the finding concerning the use of camouflaging, appropriate screening, and appropriate coloring and design of the antennas and equipment facility that's going to be placed on the roof and the chimneys, and the size of the roof, where these facilities are going to be located. They're going to match existing facilities on that roof already. It does not appear that this will have any impact, and that it is compatible with the surrounding uses in that area. The next section deals with 1780 is the Communication Facilities of the Oregon City Municipal Code, and this is the more specific section or code that specifically deals with co-location of antennas on supporting structures, as in this case. We did identify as part of the application criteria is that the applicant submit documentation demonstrating compliance with emission standards set forth by the Federal Communications Commissions. The applicant did submit that. It just appeared the site referenced in the document was inaccurate, so we did attach a condition of approval requesting that updated information be provided relevant to the site, and that the same was applicable for the requirement that they demonstrate that 40 decibel levels will not be exceeded at the property line. That report submitted was for the wrong property as well. The other two conditions of approval that we did recommend are very generic in nature, dealing with the requirement to receive a permit from our building department for our electrical and structural work done on the facility, and that they comply with the code in terms of notifying the city if that facility ever stops being utilized for more than six months. With that, staff is recommending that the application can be approved, and that the criteria for conditional use, as well as the co-location on the support structure, can be met as proposed by the applicant or with, by the implementation of the four conditions of approval. With that, I'll go ahead and conclude my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have before the applicant comes up.
I do have a question, Tony. How do we, we brought this up at another point, I think, another discussion relating to cell towers, but how do we track the electromagnetic radiation? For instance, if we get a report that says, well, it doesn't, it meets those, that criteria, how do we, how do we check that? Same with noise. I mean, it's a condition of approval, but what, what process do we as a city go through to track that and make sure that that actually meets that criteria?
Well, we're relying on the documentation submitted through the consultant that the applicant hires, being a specialist in both the noise production as well as the energy being created and released from that site, and utilizing those documents to either support or deny the application. As far as continued tracking of it, that is a good question. Like, if someone were to come in and change that after the fact to something, say, more powerful, that one would be a little bit more difficult to track. In terms of noise, you're probably into a situation of some type of a noise complaint, of which we would be able to go out and check the decibel levels at the property line. But we are relying on the consultant report that we review as to what is being installed and proposed by the applicant, and they're demonstrating that at those levels, as proposed by the applicant, they are in compliance with the FCC regulations as well as our decibel level regulations.
And one follow-up question. When you're talking about the electromagnetic radiation, does that, does that impact the interior of the school as well as the existing neighborhood? And the reason I ask that is obviously, in discussions at the neighborhood meeting, they talked with Roger Ratain about having more kids in that school, and so is that something that we should be concerned about? Does it impregnate the building itself, or is it just spread out over? I don't know. That's the question I wanted to...
And I don't know the answer to that right now. We could certainly look into that, or we could, the applicant could make his presentation, see if he can address that question. If you do have concerns about that, we can try and address that additionally, either by continuing or a condition of approval if you're not satisfied with the response that you are receiving. You know, I think one thing the applicant's probably going to talk about is that, what you're going to see is that these are much less powerful than existing cell towers and antennas that are utilized throughout the, throughout the region, but that doesn't answer your question of whether it goes through the ceiling into the school.
So at this point, we're confident that the documentation that was provided was correct. It's just the wrong addresses at this point. Do we know that for a fact?
I don't, I don't know that for a fact. I imagine that it's a very similar facility that they use throughout the region, but the fact of matter is they still needed to show, demonstrate compliance with the FCC regulations before we would issue a permit. So if, you know, it's a set standard. It's not something that's arbitrary that staff gets to decide, oh, that seems like a reasonable number. It's an FCC regulation managed by the federal government, and if it doesn't meet it, they need to change it and make it meet it.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And nobody's asking?
Any other question? Okay. I didn't see any minutes from the neighborhood meeting in the packet. There was a neighborhood meeting.
There was, yes.
And so I'm curious what the neighborhood felt about the antennas going into the school.
And I do apologize, because we did have some trouble getting the minutes from the Neighborhood Association, and they were forwarded to me in an email. And let me see if I can find those and read them into the record. Because I didn't, the McLaughlin Neighborhood Association didn't submit any comments. They did receive the packet requesting comments, and we did not receive any back that there was a concern.
Okay.
And the, I don't, when I read the email, I don't recall anything being brought up that had a concern.
One concern that I had specifically had to do with the school being a public property, a property that's owned by the school district, and as taxpayers, we all support the school district. And so that's one concern, and that can, the direction that that concern goes is, is this, is this a five-year installation? Is it a 20-year installation? Is there a termination clause for the school district to get out of having to support the private corporation's operation using the school? So should the school decide that they need to bring children in to the school and educate them, does the antenna stay, or can the school board say, say that the antenna has to go? I'm just wondering, what's the relationship between the school district and, and this one private corporation, and the term of the agreement that the school district's going to have with this company? Does the public have any future handle on what's going to happen after this antenna goes in?
I think the difficult part there is that, obviously, as you're well aware, the school district operates independently of the city. Well, our requirement is that the property owner sign on to the application. In terms of what the lease agreement is, it's not a requirement to be provided to us of what their contract is between the school district and the applicant in this case, in terms of the city planning. So I don't, I don't have that information. I don't...
Do we know if the school board made a decision that allowed Roger Ratain to, to sign the, the agreement with the phone company?
No, I don't.
Do we, do we know if they should have?
Thoughts on...
Well, I think we can, you can ask the applicant, and they can respond, and then we can deal with it from there.
Okay. The other question I had to have has to do with co-locating antennas. I understand in our code that if, if a company decides that they want to install an antenna on a utility pole, for example, when that antenna gets installed, there has to be sufficient space available for another company to be able to co-locate an antenna should they desire. Then I'm wondering how those requirements were factored in to the findings that are written in the staff report.
Well, you know, when we wrote the, when we wrote the, the code for cell towers, was that we had kind of a tiered system of what we would like. And what we'd like is for them to co-locate on existing facilities, whether that be a building, an existing tower. And I guess I'd need to go back and look at 1780 concerning utility poles, but I'm not as clear if it's required that the, when they go in, that they provide enough space for another provider. I do know the code is written in such a manner, if you built a brand-new cell tower or a pole, you needed to be able to provide ample space for other providers to co-locate on there. I need to look at 1780 concerning the co-location on existing structure, because in most of these situations, you're putting the antenna on the roof of a building, or the side of an existing pole, utility pole, or on the top of a water tower. So you're not really putting up a pole on top of that facility where you'd have more antennas on. It's usually a, a single facility, and then we would put another one next to it on the roof if there was, if there was space, and it could meet the requirements of the code. So, you know, the way I understand the co-location section of the code is, what we reviewed this against, putting it on an existing structure, was they can put their facility on there. They don't need to design it in such a manner as to allow additional providers on their smaller facility. It was really targeted towards, if you demonstrate that you can't co-locate anywhere in the city, and you have to build a brand-new pole, you need to design it in such a way as we can put other providers on there.
Now, I guess that's my concern with the fact that this is a public building. You know, it's not a city building, but it is a public building.
Sure.
And, and in this public building, there's a single sole corporation that's going to have their antenna there, and it seems to me, in fairness, and in the public's interest, that competition would be a good thing. And this is an opportunity to provide not only this company an opportunity to provide cell service, but a future opportunity for the community to have competition for that kind of a service. So I'm just, can we get some clarification, I guess, on the requirement for co-locating, co-locating space, space for co-locating additional antennas, I think? In this, it's, it's a new structure that's being constructed on the school property to accommodate this antenna.
Yes.
So as long as that's happening, I'm wondering, is there a requirement? And if there's not, perhaps there could be a condition of approval that that be, that that be required, that co-locating additional antennas from other companies in the future could be required.
We can certainly look at that.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I just want a little more on the record about not being in the historic district, and, you know, you and I sent some emails back and forth. So this building is actually bisected by part of the building being in the historic district, and the other part not being in the historic district. The cell tower is being proposed on the part that's not in the historic district, but because the building straddles both, just more on the record about that, how the city sees that.
Sure.
When, when that, and it's also a separate tax lot at that particular spot, too. But the buildings are attached together, which usually means different things.
Sure. And if you want, on the, on your desk, right next to your screen, there's a little silver toggle switch. You can go ahead and flip that, and it'll bring up the overhead. And I will try and use the pointer here. It'll take a second, it'll go black, and then it'll come up. But you don't have to turn around.
Are we going to damage the LCDs?
That's what it says.
I have messages that say, "Out of range, do not operate at this resolution," or LCD damage.
Nancy's working on that.
Okay?
Yeah. And...
What you see here is the, the site plan, and in red, we have, I've identified the tax lot. And along the northwest property line, the red tax lot there is roughly, is the boundary of the McLaughlin Historic District. So the subject's site is actually to the east-southeast of the boundary, so it's outside of the, outside of the district. So we regulate and apply the historic district design guidelines and construction requirements based on a tax lot basis. If you're in, if your tax lot's in, we would review it. If it's out, we don't review it. And in this case, it's located outside of. The second issue concerning the structure being connected is that the, the school itself is not a designated historic building. So we would apply the 1740 historic requirements if, A, you're in the district, or B, your building was designated. So it doesn't meet either of those criteria. Let's just say for argument's sake, it was in the district, or the building was designated. The next standard would be, in this case, since you're adding to an existing structure, the threshold per the code is in addition of, in addition, more than 30 percent, which this would not meet. So I think on multiple levels, it's, I'm comfortable saying that the 1740 historic standards are not applicable to this, to this project.
Okay. I'm happy with that. I just want a more on the record of how that works.
Sure.
Because we've never ran across this, where everything straddles.
Right.
Half of it's in historical, half of it's not.
Very random lines around there.
Yeah. Yes.
I just have one item in reference to condition number four. You said this is kind of a standard thing. How many towers or facilities like this do we have in the city?
Total?
Yeah.
I would need to, I need to come back with that.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm just curious. It's not two or three, then?
No, it's not.
And so is this applied to all these towers, all these facilities?
Yes.
And the city is managing and keeping up on all these?
We're, we're doing our best, yes.
I guess with the proliferation of all the towers and things, it's...
Right. And, you know, since this code went into place, there actually has not been that many new facilities. There's been, there's been a handful.
Do the existing ones also do the reporting annually?
No, because it's not required of them, because they were pre-existing. So, but if they came in to do co-location, we would then, then apply our code to them. If they came in to change something on that, on an existing tower...
You do require them to do any report?
Right. Exactly.
Okay.
So, yes, there are several that are, that are pre-existing when this code went into effect in 2004, I believe.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Any further from, all right, then we'll call for the applicant's presentation.
Keep mine on an analog form in here. Okay. My name is Kevin Martin. I'm representing Clearwire. My address, 2495 Northwest 121st Place, Portland, 97229. Typically, in cases like this, where the staff report recommends approval and the conditions of approval are acceptable, I don't like to bore people with a presentation, and basically, we'd just be willing to answer any questions you might have about our proposal. And we have some questions about the lease. We have some questions about the RF exposure levels. I can get into those particular items.
Numbers of antennas and co-locating as well.
Yeah. As far as the, the number of antennas, the way... Yeah, as far as the number of antennas, the way Clearwire is set up, I think there will be the three sectors, probably three sectors, and there'll be one panel antenna for each sector. Then rather than using a telephone line to get the data and info into the switched telephone network, Clearwire uses microwave. And so some, all the info that comes in through the antennas then gets microwaved out, ultimately gets sent to a hub somewhere, and then it gets dumped into a fiber optic line and then into the network. So there will be one or two microwave dishes up there. Those are point-to-point. They shoot a beam like a pencil. So the power levels are very, very low on those. The panel antennas, and the ones we've been installing to this point, they typically transmit at about 35 watts. We may be upgrading to what's called a quad antenna, which enables us to transmit on two channels, which would double that to about 70 watts, 75 watts, something like that. That is very low power in the grand scheme of things. The FCC has their exposure standards that were, you know, they were adopted quite some time ago. They were readapted back in the later 90s, and actually, somebody appealed it all the way to Supreme Court. Supreme Court says, no, they're good. So those are the standards that we deal with. We, Clearwire as a company and all wireless companies, anybody that transmits, that has a legal license to transmit on FCC regulated frequency, has to comply with those. In our particular case, since the power is so low, and we're usually about 10% of what a typical cellular installation is, which is, it's a good thing in that the exposure levels are low. It's a bad thing in that our sites don't cover that much area. So we need more sites. So typically, when you do the calculations, and it's, it can all be done mathematically. I actually have an Excel spreadsheet I can do it on, but I can't do Clearwire because I don't have their antenna data. It comes out at less than 0.01% of what's allowed. So you could be up in the West Hills with a 50,000-watt broadcast tower, ain't going to meet the standard if it's high enough in the air. With wireless, including Clearwire broadband, it's virtually impossible to exceed the limit. So, I mean, the levels are very, very, very low. And another thing I'd point out, too, particularly on a rooftop like at the school, a wall will typically attenuate the signal by a factor of 10. If it's wood or something like that. If it's concrete, it'll attenuate it more. If it's steel, it will almost completely block it. So at that number two, the antennas are directional. They're like a headlight on a car, not like a bare light bulb. They're aimed out and they're aimed at the horizon. They have 120-degree beam width, and the vertical beam width is, oh, something like 30 degrees. So just about everything is aimed out at the horizon, there's very minimal energy that actually goes straight down. There's enough residual energy going down so that if you had a computer and you plug your Clearwire antenna into it, it would work and would work in the building. But it's only, that's only because it's close. The main energy is aimed off at the horizon to provide, you know, the greatest range, spread to the, you know, largest number of customers. That's our goal. As far as co-location, our site is not being built so that other antennas can be located on it because it's kind of a one-of-a-kind. However, the lease with the school district does not preclude co-location. So another company could approach the Oregon City School District and say, "We'd also like to go on your roof." And our lease would not preclude them from doing that. They would have to negotiate their own terms, their own design and whatnot with the school district. I think probably all that's in there is a non-interference clause that says if somebody else comes up there, they can't interfere with the operation of the Clearwire equipment up there, which is usually not an issue. Once in a while, something will come up, but it can be worked out. So Clearwire doesn't care who else goes on that roof, our lease doesn't preclude anybody from going on that roof. It's totally up to the school district. We proposed the faux chimney for engineering reasons. I can't say that we wouldn't make that available to another carrier if they thought that that might work. But that would be up to Clearwire, not the school district. So, but the school district could negotiate with another carrier and say, "Hey, Clearwire, you know, got room in that faux chimney up there?" And for a fee, we'd probably let them go in there. So there's a lot of cooperation between carriers these days when you're trying to build new sites. So it's not in Clearwire's interest to try to stifle anybody else from going up there. Number one, because we may want to go on some other carriers' installation in the future. And number two, we don't directly compete with them. So it's kind of like, fine, sit down, talk about it, we'll work it out. So, and that happens a lot, unlike 15 years ago where it didn't happen at all. Now that is the norm rather than the exception.
Is there a time limit on the lease or a time period for the lease?
The leases are typically fairly lengthy because of the amount of investment that goes into it, the time, the money to build it and whatnot. The typical lease is five years with three or four, five-year renewal periods. And it's typically, the property owner does not have rights to cancellation. Clearwire has rights to cancellation. So we don't want to be at the whim of a landlord that says, "Oh, by the way, we just decided we don't want you here anymore." Well, okay, we spent $300,000 and it's part of our network. I'm not sure if there are any particular clauses in the lease with the school district regarding termination that are different than what we usually do. But normally, termination, it's kind of a one-way lease. So in the lessees' favor.
Any other questions? All right, very good. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, at this time, there's no public for comment, so we won't offer that at this, tonight. Tony, you were going to read in the neighborhood. Did you find that?
I did not.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of it by chance? Do you have a copy of it with your stuff?
No.
Okay.
But yeah, that'd be great. Would that meet your...
That would. And the discussion about the school district having the authority to grant access to another carrier also addresses my concerns about co-locating another company's equipment in that facility. I do have one question, if I might, for Tony, and that is, are these conditions of approval, are they always, do they ever have a term on them? Can they be renewed in five years, for example? Can the condition of approval be up for reapproval in a specific time period?
If the commission would like, if you'd like to let the applicant come back up and talk about McLaughlin, and I'll try and find the reference to how long a conditional use permit is good for.
Sure. It'd be great. If you wouldn't mind, Kevin, just give us an overview of the neighborhood meeting.
For the record, Kevin Martin, representing Clearwire. The interesting thing about going to the neighborhood meeting was they were more interested into what the service was rather than what the impacts were. So, you know, what is Clearwire? Well, Clearwire is different than AT&amp;T and T-Mobile and Verizon and Sprint and Nextel in that T-Mobile is a wireless broadband service. We're not a telephone service. It's internet. So, and I was basically explaining to them, it's kind of competition for DSL on your phone line, or if you've got cable, like Comcast, or like where I live, there's Verizon Fiber. That's what they're doing, is they're competing for that in both the at-home market and for mobile use. And, you know, so that you can take your laptop and lunchtime, you can take it out and you can, you know, go down to a waterfront park on the river and fire it up, and if you're a Clearwire customer, you've got broadband while you're sitting down there eating your sandwich. So that was primarily the main questions they had is who we were and what type of service would we provide. And they didn't really get into the design aspects. We had, you know, the drawings there showing that we were intending to put up this faux chimney, the fancy term. It's a fake chimney and made out fiberglass, and it'll be designed to meet the existing chimney that's up there. And we've done several of those, and they look pretty good. So that was kind of the main...
The school superintendent was there, right?
Pardon me?
The school board superintendent was there?
No, he was not at that meeting. And he wanted to come tonight, but he had another meeting he had to attend. So he was, or the individual that, with the school district that we've been working with. So by signing the, what we call it, a letter of authorization, they agreed to let myself and the company I work for and Clearwire represent them in these proceedings. So, and I know that the individual I've been working with wanted to be here tonight, but I says, "Well, you don't have to be here." And he says, "Well, okay, because I got someplace else I have to be." So I'm here for everybody tonight. So that was the basic gist of the neighborhood meeting.
Very good. Thank you, appreciate it.
So I guess if I can come back and kind of talk about their question about requiring co-location on a support structure. And when you walk through 1780, it talks about the design standard, 1780-100, and criteria C is co-location. And it specifically says, "Co-location. New support towers shall be designed to accommodate co-location of additional providers." So we specifically identified support towers as being needed to be designed in such a manner as to provide co-location. And a support tower means a structure designed and constructed exclusively to support a wireless communication facility or an antenna array, including but not limited to monopoles, lattice towers, guide towers, and self-supporting towers. As opposed to a support structure means an existing building or other structure to which an antenna is or will be attached, included but not limited to buildings, steeples, water towers, billboard signs. Support structures do not include support towers, buildings or structures used for residential purposes, utility poles, light standards or light poles. So I'm not sure that the way the code's written currently, that the co-location is specifically required for this facility.
If you build a support structure, or a support tower on top of a support structure...
You're still building a new support tower.
You're still, right, you're still building a new support tower.
You would be building a new cell tower on top of it. In this case, this is antenna arrays inside of a faux chimney for camouflage. I wouldn't consider what they're proposing here a new tower.
Yeah. I see what you're saying. But I mean, it is still a monolithic projectile into space that will be used to, the same thing as a support tower would do, correct? I don't want to, I don't, I don't even know what we're getting at.
Yeah, at some point, yeah. I mean, in order to attach the antennas, you're going to have to build some type of a structure that comes off of the roof and if...
Which is a faux chimney.
Right. And how are we going to define a tower as opposed to the camouflagingness for putting the antennas on the roof?
Right. And then, and again, this maybe not this app's particular application, but to look at something like a, what is a support structure? I mean, you said building, but what if it's a, what if it's a 10-by-10 cement pads five feet in the air and they want to build on that? Is that a support structure or that would be...
I think it would, I think it would depend on how tall they were proposing to build it. I guess we haven't run into that yet, and I'm not sure we define exactly at what height you become a tower versus auxiliary equipment in support for, to put antennas on top of a building. I don't think, we don't have that defined.
Yeah. Well, that's just something to think about when we look at the code because I think that is something that would be of concern if we're sticking with that because we are building a support tower on top of a support structure.
I think it could be called a wireless communication facility, which is any unstaffed facility for transmission or reception of radio frequency signals, includes but not limited to auxiliary support equipment, any support tower or structure used to achieve the necessary elevation for the antenna transmission and reception cabling and devices in all antenna arrays. So it's a wireless communication facility. And it sounds like the code's being specific about picking out a support tower and a support structure, and kind of an umbrella to those is this wireless communication facility. So it might be that the code in some places talks about this umbrella term, the facility, and in other places it's specific, specifically talking about structures or towers. I think that that may provide some ambiguity in the code that makes it difficult for us to understand.
So far, it has.
Yeah. Yeah.
And certainly, you know, that's why it's in front of you in terms of, you know, this is a discretion, there is some discretion in this. And I'll just, you know, the way I interpret it was that this was not a new tower. This was a facility on top of a roof. So that's kind of where my staff report was written from and my rationale and thinking behind that.
I couldn't tell from the measurements, how high is it stick up?
I believe it was ten foot.
Ten feet, wasn't it?
Yes, to match the existing chimneys next to it.
So there's plenty of room for other chimneys up there. This could be really impressive. You could have 20 chimneys up there, zero carbon output.
There you go. That ought to count for something.
Yeah, you know, the height doesn't, I guess I always think of towers as being up in the airways, and these don't, this doesn't seem to be in that range to me.
No, I agree. But the ambiguity in it, it concerns me, not for this application, but for future applications. And that's, I think, something that, it came up during this, we had to talk about it at some point. And in this particular application, I think it's fine. I think it meets the requirement, it's not an issue. But if it were a 30-foot tower on top of it, then I'd have a little more concern.
You know, like I said, that might be something we can certainly put a note for the code requirements because, for example, putting a facility on top of an existing utility pole, you are limited to how much additional height you can provide. So we do do it, we have identified a height limitation when you're putting it on an existing utility pole. So we just haven't identified how high can you go on top of a roof.
And what it would look like if you did. I mean, a RIP antenna is one thing.
Right.
You know, a radio tower is another. But we should define that, I think. But not necessarily for this application.
And I guess going back to the question about conditional use permit and re-review, what we have is 1756060 talks about the revocation of a conditional use permit. The planning commissioner or city commission may initiate administrative action under 1750, which, to revoke any conditional use permit previously issued by the city or, with regard to lands annexed by the city, those such permits issued by the county. The planning commission or, on review of the city commission, may revoke such permit upon determination, A, one or more conditions attached to the grant of the conditional use permit have not been fulfilled, and B, the unfulfilled condition is substantially related to the issuance of the conditional use permit. So example, we have recommended a condition of a four... So, example, we have recommended condition of a four, condition of approval four, talking about the continued use. So, that would be an area where you could come back and revisit if that's not being met. We also have 1756-070 talks about the periodic review of conditional use permits. The city commission may provide for the periodic review of some or all of the conditional use permits previously issued by the city or with regard to lands annexed by the city, those such permits issued by the county. In providing for such review, the city commission may designate classes of such previously issued permits for which periodic review shall be undertaken. What's that saying is you just can't go pick one conditional use permit. If you're going to review cell towers, you need to review all the conditional cell towers. So, you just can't pick and choose which use you're going to review. B, such review shall be accomplished as an administrative action under chapter 1750 and it shall be limited to the question of whether additional conditions should be imposed on a conditional use in light of changing circumstances and more efficient implementation of the city's comprehensive plan. Notwithstanding the provisions of chapter 1758, which is our non-conforming section, any additional conditions shall be met as a requirement for continued operation of the conditional use. So, in essence, it's saying, yeah, I don't think we could just say you need to come back and we're going to revisit this after you've invested and started running and we're just going to pull it. There has to be some rationale or change in situation or rewrite of the code to address that.
What I'm imagining is that the community decides that they want to use that building as a school and then they want to revisit the decision that allowed the installation of electromagnetic field generator in that facility. And so, that's my concern is to give us an opportunity at a point in the future, say five years, to bring this conditional use back up for reapproval. So, the change in condition would be that the community values have shifted to change this property use into a use for a school district, for children.
The problem with that, though, is we don't, the city's code doesn't prohibit cell towers on schools.
That's true today, but that could also change in five years, could it not?
If it changed in five years, the tower would be non-conforming and there would have to be some amortization clause in the code in five years that says cell towers are no longer permitted on public schools and they have to be removed in six months or a year or...
Okay.
And that's how that would work in the future.
So, we wouldn't necessarily have to call that out in this conditional use?
No. I think that the change in either the code would drive that because I was just going to say what the attorney was saying was, you know, let's just say we put a condition on there that says we're going to come back and review this if it's used for, if students are placed back in the facility. But then what are we going to review it against? Because if they're still meeting, if they're still complying with FCC regulations, we don't have a minimum standard.
Understand that.
So, it would be much more enforceable if we changed the code and said we're not putting cell towers on schools anymore. And then that would be the change in circumstances. But much like our signed permit, right, we've got an amortization time period of which you can change this or you come in and address it and maybe it's not an issue. But I think that, I don't know that a condition's necessary to address that.
Okay, very good. Got it?
Yep.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, this time we're going to close the public hearing and bring it up to the commission for discussion and deliberation. The only one on my screen is Tony Conkle. And you don't get to talk. All right, any?
I think it's personally, can I talk or do I have to push a button?
You have to push a button so that they can get you on the record.
I didn't take the trainings.
Oh, that's right, sorry. We'll get you taken care of.
On the floor. But you could actually speak.
We could.
We haven't turned your mic off.
Now that it's green, I'm okay.
You're okay.
All right. I think it's a good use of the facility, definitely, and I appreciate all the information. It was, you can almost make a tower out of it, but I think it's a very good idea and I'd like to go along with it, approve it.
Okay, very good. Dan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this. There's no other comments to approve. Let's see, it's conditional use and site plan and design review, so it's CU 09-01 and SP 09-07.
I'll second that.
You got a motion and a second on the floor. And in just one moment, we'll take roll. I love this new stuff.
It sure has speeded things up, you know?
We're working on it. Okay, I think we're ready for the vote. Right? Commissioner Stein? Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois?
Aye.
Chair Cal?
Aye.
All right.
All right, has been, motion has been approved. Thank you very much. And good luck on your project. All right, Tony, what your recommendation is, what, to go on to the next?
City annexation.
Look at that. Good job. Ready to go? Yeah, it's great. All right, now let's go back to, I'm going to have to read the next one here. This is an annexation AN 09-01. They should put this on there.
Yeah, I think they're going to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that I figured out.
You have to read this, I'm sure. All right, so I'm going to have to read my, no one's come in.
Has come in.
So, we really, no, we don't.
I think we would just go through that part, say.
Just ask for...
We need to ask for any conflict management to expect a contact or bias.
And saying that, do we have any?
None.
None.
None here either, so let's move on to Tony.
AN 09-01.
Thank you. AN 09-01, annexation.
Great, thank you. So, Tony, I'll be presenting the annexation request for Mr. and Mrs. Bauer. They live at 19921 County Court and they're proposing to annex in one property directly north of their property that's approximately .55 acres and it's identified as, map, Clackamas County map, three south, two east, nine DD, tax lot 3400. So, the property is an existing, what we call a county island. It's surrounded on all four sides by properties within the city limits. It looks like when we went around and did our county island annexations in 2001, this property was not accounted for. It did exist at that time and we just, we missed it when we went through this process. The property is located north of Glen Oak Road, west of Beaver Creek Road, south of Myers Road, just south of the Oregon City High School. The property has a comprehensive plan designation of medium density residential, which means if it is approved, forwarded by the planning commission and city commission for a vote and is voted in by the voters, it would come in at R5, which is a 5,000 square foot minimum lot size. At .55 acres, that means it's, you're looking at approximately three to four homes. If you can address, the issue here is that it's a landlocked parcel and so any new lot that would be created in the future through either partition or subdividing would need to have access to a public street, in this case, County Court. So, you're looking at some type of a flagpole situation to get that. The parcel is vacant. It's not served by water sewer. It will not be served until some future time if it is annexed and a building permit is requested for that property. The annexation approval criteria require that we look at the metro requirements for a boundary change and that includes consistently with applicable ORS 195 agreements or annexation plans. We have addressed the agreements that we do have with, for example, Tri-City and Clackamas River Water. We do not have any annexation plans that are applicable. Consistency with directly applicable provisions of urban planning agreements between the annexing entity and a necessary party. Sanitary sewer, there's an existing eight-inch sanitary sewer line in Glen Oak Road to the south of the site and Emerson Court to the north of the site. One of the requirements is, we used to be able to recommend automatic annexation of the property in the Tri-City Service District. ORS has been changed, so now it's a two-step process. If it is approved by the voters, they would need to go in front of Tri-City to go through the procedure of annexing into the service district. So, we are recommending that if Tri-City does approve that annexation request that we concur with that. The city commission would concur with that at a later date if it is voted in by the voters. There is no, as I stated earlier, water being provided to the site. Any future development would address water and stormwater from the site. There are stormwater lines in Glen Oak Road that could be, could provide stormwater for the site. The territory is already in Clackamas County Fire District. There's no need to annex in or out of that district. We are recommending, and this can happen concurrently, that the facility be removed from Clackamas County Service District for enhanced law enforcement. Those police, law enforcement activities would be taken over by Oregon City upon annexation. We did have the Oregon City Police Chief update our stats, which now Oregon City feels approximately 1.27 officers per thousand population, so that has actually gotten better from previous annexation applications that we have seen in terms of officers per thousand. The site is approximately .1 miles from Oregon City High School and approximately .6 miles from Clackamas Community College. In addition, the city is currently, has purchased property approximately a half a mile west of the subject site on Glen Oak Road for a future city park. There is a Clackamas, there's a tri-night bus stop at Clackamas Community College in the center of campus, approximately three-quarters a mile from the site. The third criteria is consistent with, consistently with directly applicable standards for boundary changes contained in comprehensive land use plans and public facility plans concerning Clackamas County. Their comprehensive plan just talks about the need to make sure we have capital improvement plans in place to address the urbanization. This site, for all intents and purposes, is city and urban. Facilities are available to the north-south of the site to provide water, sanitary, storm. The urban growth management agreement we do have between the city and Clackamas County, the requirements include that we provide notice to the county, which we did, and that if, as we do annexations, that we do take over any county roads adjacent to the site. It's not applicable in this situation. Fifth criteria concerns whether proposed boundary change will promote or not interfere with the timely, orderly, neccional provision of public facilities and services. Once again, it's completely surrounded by city properties. The services are available and in close proximity. Considering the Oregon municipal code, we talk about, the first criteria is the adequacy of access to the site. It can be, County Court intersects with Glen Oak Road, a collector's street, which then provides access to 213 and Beaver Creek Road. The one issue, there's no access issue concerning the public right-of-ways. The access issue will be upon the partitioning or subdividing of that property to make sure that we can get some type of a flag lot to those rear properties, but that would be reviewed at time of an actual application for development. In terms of the transportation system, there is adequate access to the site. Conformity of the proposal with the city's comprehensive plan. Section 14 talks about annexation of lands to the city. Really, the policies are dealing with making sure we don't do a cherry stem, which we're not in this situation, that we don't create additional islands. If we were, we would consider taking in those islands, those properties to avoid creating it and then to implement concept plan or subarea plans. So, we're, you know, getting rid of an island, in this case, it's not a cherry stem and there are no subarea plans to apply to this property. Goal 11 deals with the provision of public facilities. For the existing condition of vacant, there will be no impact on the existing facilities. The three to four lots that could potentially be constructed on the site would be reviewed at time of development. But preliminarily, we are required to make a finding concerning the projected impacts and we just, we don't see any impacts to the infrastructure, water, sanitary sewer, transportation, the trips that would be created from this are negligible. They would be addressed through the transportation review. And the only other issue is police services, which we've continually talked about in the city. As you may recall, some applicants have proposed a certain fee per, to address the impacts that they have when they first annex to the city before those facilities, before those properties come on the tax rolls, they provided additional funds per building unit. The applicant did not do this in this case. I did discuss earlier that the comp plan designation is medium density residential or would come in at R5, 5,000 square foot lot size. The fourth criteria, compliance with applicable sections of ORS chapter 222, that once again talks about that the property must be contiguous, which it is meeting. There are no natural hazards identified on the property, no overlay districts, no historic buildings, no open space requirements or designations. It's a flat vacant piece surrounded by existing development. We are recommending that the planning commission concur and forward this with a recommendation of approval to the city commission for their consideration and that we would set the annexation date, the election date for May 18, 2010 ballot. We would recommend withdrawing the territory from the county service district for enhanced law enforcement as allowed by statute and we would recommend that the city commission concur with Tri-City Service District's annexation of the subject property and the enacting ordinance upon voter approval of the city annexation. And with that, we have included reasonings and findings of facts which walked through the metro criteria and our criteria. And then we would request that you forward this to the city commission with a recommendation of approval for their consideration at the January 6, 2010 public hearing. With that, I'll conclude my presentation and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thanks, Tony. Questions? Dan?
I got a question, real quick one. So, it's coming in at, so we have a piece of property that's county and surrounding it is completely the city. And we're bringing it as R5, medium density. What is around it? It doesn't say in the staff report what is around it.
What's west of it?
West, east, north, south.
To the south is R10, off the top of my head. Just make sure I didn't write that down here. The property to the east is zoned, is medium density residential as well. To the north is the existing COF, I'm drawing a blank on the name of the subdivision. And it is, I believe, it is R6 to the north of the site.
That would be medium density as well.
That was, that's actually the highest density allowed in high, low-density residential. So, low-density residential, we have R10, R8, and R6. Medium density, we have R5 and R3.5. High-density, we have R2.
We have two sides that are low-density around it and what, two sides with medium density and then we're going to be putting in medium? You see what I'm getting at, I just didn't want, what if everything was R10 around it and we're bringing in R5? That's simply my question is, do we see any discrepancy? Do we see any issues with the surrounding zoning and bringing this in as R5?
Everything to the south of the property is R10 and those are its old county subdivision with roughly half-acre lots. To the north is the smaller R6, R8, and then to the, and that would be to the north and to the west and then directly to the east is the medium density residential. So, you've kind of got three different zonings around it on all sides.
Any other questions?
I've got one question. How many other islands do we think we might have? Was it, this is the last one? Okay. It's today.
Early, yes.
No, I'm sure they're hard to find.
All right. Well, if no more questions, then we have no applicant. Well, if no more questions, then we have no applicant and we have no citizens for, to discuss this public comment, so.
And I would say they did identify in 2001, but for some reason, the legal description didn't get included in the ordinance. So that's why it wasn't included. So there was some, you know, there were quite a few properties brought in in that process and now this one just, just slipped through.
Okay. So we'll close the public hearing and bring you back up for deliberations.
I think it makes perfect sense to bring it back.
Yeah. I mean, if ever there was a time to bring in an annexation, I think this is the one.
The one?
I think this is the one.
I'll move to recommend approval of the proposed annexation AN0901. Set the election for May 18th, 2010. The City Commission for their consideration at the January 6th, 2010 public hearing.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejois?
Aye.
Chair Powell?
Aye.
All right. Passes for zero.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Okay. Look at that. So great. Motion to table.
I hear trouble.
All right, let's move on. And our next discussion is a legislative, is a discussion regarding amendments. This is a six-month update. Do we need a break before we start this?
Pick it. Three-minute break.
Okay. All right.
As soon as.
He's done with his secretarial duties?
Thank you, Chair Powell. This is our second hearing on the six-month update. As you recall, in the last meeting in November, we opened up the record again for the original L0801 file. When the amendments were adopted in, in July, on July 1st, in the ordinance was, were two dates certened to open up the record back for Planning Commission and City Commission review. In your memo, the Exhibit A of this packet, I included potential proposed dates. And these are kind of working dates, knowing this is a legislative process and, and there is no 120-day clock. But ideally, this is what we'd like to proceed with. We started off on November 23rd as the first Planning Commission hearing. On December 8th, Dan Drantlaw gave the City Commission a general update of where we are in the process. Tonight is December 14th. January 11th will continue to provide you with amendments, hopefully the last batch of amendments. And then on January 20th, that was the date in the, in the ordinance for the first City Commission hearing, but we're going to push it back a couple more weeks, so we'll continue that. And then we'd like to see either on the January 25th meeting or the February 8th, wrapping up the Planning Commission aspect of this and setting on Planning Commission comments to the City Commission. And we've identified a potential February 9th work session and we haven't gotten that confirmed with Larry Patterson yet, but if you want to take a look at your calendars and see if that's, that'll work for you, please let me know. And then we've proposed out for potentially two City Commission hearings and then maybe the third and fourth being the readings of the ordinance. So right now, this is proposed, but we would like to get the majority of the, of rest of the updates to you at the meeting right after the new year. So kind of see this in three packets and then there might be something small coming in at the January 20th meeting. But tonight, what I'd like to do with Pete Walter and myself is just briefly go through the memo again and highlight the exhibits we've, we presented and the issues that were related to that and I'll kind of, Pete and I'll tag team and talk a little bit about what we've submitted. The first one, Exhibit A, is cottage housing and there's two things that were amended in the cottage housing. One, one aspect is not very controversial. It's just looking through and seeing if there are any discrepancies or if there are times where we need to be a little more clear about what our setbacks were, so you can take a look at those and just see where we just need to be more definitive about our descriptions. The second aspect was something I want to bring up and hear your comments. The initial codes that came out of the Puget Sound area didn't really talk about what happens if there's an existing house on the site. And over time, as you see, some of the newer cities bringing code online, they start to address that. And there's really kind of two ways you can look at it. We could not bring the existing house into the cottage housing. We could say, no, you need to do a partition or, and separate that house out and we'll, you can, we'll look at the cottage housing on the, the resulting lot. Or, you know, you need to move it off-site. Or we could say, no, we'll, we'll take a look at the existing house on the lot and we'll build the cottage housing around it. So there's kind of two ways you can look at it. One benefit about finding a way to incorporate the house is when you require them to put it in a partition, is you're really losing some of the rear yard setback and side yard that could be used to help incorporate into the cottage housing. So I see it as a benefit to bring in, if there's an existing house, into the cottage housing profile because I think it gives a lot more flexibility than just forcing it. And where I see this happening is maybe out on Central Point Road or Pease Road where you may have an acre lot and maybe you have the house up front and then you have the large person in the back. How do we want to address that? And so what we did in the proposed code, and you'll see that the very bottom, that last section of the cottage housing, it says existing dwelling units on site, and this is on page 123, if you're looking at your packet. And it means you can keep the cottage housing on site. It's, will be considered a dwelling unit in the, in the number of dwelling units you're allowed on site, but we won't use it in looking at the, the density, I mean, the, the average gross square feet. So that'll just not be looked at in all the, the new cottage housing that's bought in. So let's say you have the main house and five cottages housings behind it. The five cottage housing will have to meet the average gross square feet, but we won't, we won't bring the 1,200 square foot home into that because it won't, it'll be above the, the maximum. But the, the five that you build or the four cottage housing you build will need to meet the code. But the main house will still be part of the, the number dwelling units allowed on, on the site. The other aspect is, once you have the house, any changes you do to that house will need to meet the cottage housing requirement. So let's say you have an existing house and you want to build a porch. Well, great, you can build a porch because that's allowed under cottage housing, but you can't make the house bigger, square-footage-wise. You're kind of, once you're in, you're kind of grandfathered and just like cottage housing, the house can't get any bigger. So there are, there are some restrictions on that. So I thought this was a way to address that situation of what do you do with existing house, because I'd hate to either force people to demolish a house or force them to do a partition, therefore making the final area even smaller. And when you're, when you're done with it, the person walking down the street wouldn't know that Lot 1 is, is separated from the cottage housing because they'll just see the house still there and the cottage housing behind it. So I see it as a flexibility option.
So there's really no risk of overbuilding? I mean.
No, because it's going to be the, the same unit. I mean, the only thing is, is that main house is going to be, is bigger. You still have to get your number, your required open space, private, public, still have to find parking. You still have to fit those, all those pieces of the puzzle together. And so if you have a giant house, you may not be able to meet all the pieces of the puzzle. I mean, it just may not work. But if you have maybe a small bungalow that's 1,200 square feet, it may work.
If they wanted to demolish the house, that would have to be done before.
Yeah. What we could probably do is, well, maybe a condition approval, but probably done before.
Yeah, I mean, that would make sense. So you at least know what you're working with there on the totals. Yeah, okay. Makes sense.
Any other questions on cottage housing?
Want any specific feedback?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, I got a question about what you're proposing. I'd just like to know where, where that sort of comes from. The maximum accessory building footprint for parking or community use is 600 square feet, which, you know, on these sites where you're trying to get a lot in, you know, parking then becomes the hardest part.
Right.
And you're, what we're doing, and I like it in one way, but I don't like it in the other. In one way, it keeps everything, you know, I could see, that's basically three, three parking, you know, that could be a parking garage that has three in it, 200 square feet each. And I'm just, where does it, where's, is it to control that so you don't get a five-car garage?
Well, there's multiple ones. One we added to allow, we were more specific about community use because some cottage housings have a shared little community room or a shared shed, you know, where I've seen ones where they've, have a shed building and you see each cottage having their, you know, stall where you can put your lawnmower or garden's equipment or whatever stuff we all have. So that's an option. I've also seen it where there's a shared community room, like in a apartment complex, you might see those, you know, so you can rent out or, I mean, the people in the, they can sign up to use the, the shared meeting hall kind of thing. So we wanted to allow that to happen, but we need to put a cap on the size of it. And 600 is kind of our category of kind of, in our existing code for accessory buildings, that 200 to 600 square feet, we kind of put this cap at 600 where we see, because no one else in a single-family residential zone can have an accessory building over 600 square feet. So we kind of, if we're looking at parity between this infill cottage development and something next door, somebody who wants to build an accessory building, the, I mean, the idea is the cottage housing should be compatible with what's around it. So that's why the 600. The other issue with parking is, for the most part, I mean, I think for a lot of cottage housing, which I've seen up in Puget Sound, is a lot of it's uncovered parking and there may be a couple units that get the desired covered parking that they pay a premium for because you can't, once again, get the common open space, the private open space, all those things and build your building and get your setbacks and fitting that puzzle pieces in. So you're, you're not going to see, you know, with all that and the, you know, everyone having their own covered parking space garage. I just would be surprised to see a product that could meet all the needs and provide everyone with their own interior parking space. So the idea is to put a cap on the 600 saying, if you are going to build these accessory buildings, they need to be commensurate in size with what your neighbors can build.
And I, again, I like that because I don't want this thing, you know, the garage things to be bigger than these neat little cottage things and you got this massive thing there.
Right.
The other question that I have is relating to, and it's actually just a minor one, but the maximum height is 25 feet. How did you derive that? Because here would be my concern, if it's a two-story, you know, that's 10, 20, so you've got five feet to work with.
But that's measured at the midpoint.
At the midpoint, yeah, still, like, you know, then that's going to, you know, that's going to start controlling the width of the house, right? So that when you get the gable to work and so, we're 612, why not 412?
Right.
You know, I could say 1212, you know, obviously that would be, you start, you know, it really restrict a two-story.
And the communities in the Puget Sound area, for the most part cottage housing is coming out of Puget Sound, so there's about 10 communities and so that's what we're looking at. Bainbridge shoreline, I can't even name it, but those are the ones we would look at the code and talking. But there's a, there's a, there's a fear of getting the skinny rowhouse effect. And so what some communities have done is put that 25 foot, because it's basically saying, we're enforcing you to find a lower-profile design. We're kind of creating this because we don't want, you know, that 1012 skinny, so we don't, we don't want someone to take a rowhouse design and cut it up to be a single-family detached and just kind of sticking it on.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense to me.
So I don't think there's anything sacred, I mean, but I think if we kept the underlying zone of 35 feet, you very well may not, I think you could very well get stuck with a product that meets all the checkmarks, but ends up being this kind of tall, skinny rowhouse building. And so that was that kind of make, pushing it. And I, I struggle with that too and I, we had talked about it in-house is, okay, well if we write, you know, if we keep, put the limit up, how do we make sure that it's not skinny but at the same time being clear and objective? Because what I can't see as a staff level is say, well, these are kind of skinny and ugly, even though you've met all the.
It's automatically controlled.
Yeah, so it is, it's one of those things, when you're clear and objective, you are forcing the design, but you're also making sure that the worst-case scenario doesn't happen. But you could also potentially be losing out on an interesting design too. And that's the, the problem when you, when you code that down that path. But I, I can take a look and we can revisit in January. Commissioner Lejois, if you want to talk a little bit, because I'm not, I'm not sold on it, but that's what I've heard from the communities up there is that's, they wanted more of a bungalow and, you know, it's something you can't do, I mean, other than a bungalow, you could definitely do a vernacular version of a cottage and then you would end up being a little bit taller. So we can, we can revisit that and see if there's ways to, through a clear, objective path.
Yeah, and I guess my question is relating more to how, how you even got it in the first place. And it sounds like other areas have done it with success and certain controls, some failed, some were better than others. And so I'm hoping that that's what this represents as the best scenario, really. That gives flexibility, but at the same time, that we're not getting.
Yeah, remember, these are 800 square feet, so even if you have a vernacular, you know, what's above is, you know, you're not putting door mirrors on, I mean, you're, it's going to be a small living space on the second floor. So really, even because your footprint's so small, I still think, you know, and maybe you can take a look at what like a 1012 or 1212 pitch would be if, if we are excluding, because a vernacular is definitely an architecture that we have in Oregon City, so I'd hate to exclude something that's historically appropriate for our area just because somebody wanted to make sure bungalows were the, kind of the design type. So I can look at that.
Any other questions on cottage housing?
I appreciate the pictures.
It's amazing what pictures do.
Well, it really is. I mean, I think we talked about this back when we originally done, have done this, that this is going to be so much better for the public, how pictures you can point to.
Yeah, and we definitely have interest from people. No one's, you know, moving forward, but people kind of, especially in this market, they go, hmm, well, I think I may be able to do that in this market, whereas I think we're, we're really attuned right now for developers thinking other than the traditional single-family house right now.
Mm-hmm.
Well, for the next section, 1720, there is a couple of changes. Most of these are just cleanup. We wanted to specifically say that before we said, we had this weird ratio of what triggered review for an existing single-family house for these residential design. And really, at the end of the day, the only thing, the only time it really should kick you in is if you built a new garage, because that's really the only time where we want to make sure it's not, you're not getting less compliant. So that we made it explicit that if you're doing a kitchen addition to your house, we're going, and you're an existing building, you get to go straight to the building division. We'll just check your setbacks. But if you're adding a new third-car garage, you'll be pulled into these, these standards. So that's always been the case, but we were just, well, a lot more explicit about it this time. The second one, we, for some reason, wasn't explicit enough that you either meet 1720 or you can choose the less clear and objective path, which is the new Park Place residential design standards, which allow a type-two process for a little more innovative design. And that's something you could voluntarily, voluntarily do, whereas before, if you didn't meet it, you didn't meet it and you have to ask for a variance. So this just lets them know that there's kind of a separate path you can go through if you really want to pursue an alternate design. Let's begin clarification about how we measure carports. We measure it to the farthest interior garage wall or the carport cover, not the post, because a lot of people bring the carport cover way past the post, so I was just being more specific. Oh, there's two more. And then we want to make sure for corner lots, when we added that you needed to have 34-inch trim on corner lots for windows, that, that's also the same for through lots. And then finally, we had a section about having a, a window over the garage on a second level. We allowed us, now allow a single-story option because for, our previous code really constrained single-family homes because a lot of our design elements were based on set two-story homes. So if you were a single-story house, there were just whole sections that you just couldn't even meet, even if you wanted to. even meet, even if you wanted to. So we just wanted to give more flexibility for options for single stories. So that's what was added under 1720. And I'm going to pass on to Pete, who will talk about natural resource tree protection.
Unless you have any questions about 1720? Okay. Okay, the next two sections of code, 1741 and 1749, we'll be coming back to you again because there's some minor changes to numbering that we'll need to address since we put these in the packet for you. On 1741, which is our tree protection code, which applies to site development subdivisions and partitions, what we've done with this code section, look at that, is provide a, the first thing is, we've clarified a procedure for how mitigation trees are calculated. Under this code, an applicant has four options for how they comply with the standards. They can use one of those options or any combination of those options. So the first option is the option of tree removal and mitigation, tree preservation, removal and mitigation. And previously, what we had in the code was a calculation, an example calculation for how you do this. And what we've proposed replacing this with is a very stepwise calculation process. And I'll go through this with you.
On page 130.
Yes, on page 130 of the packet. And the first step is you have, you count every tree on the site over six inches in diameter. The second step is that you provide an arborist report that documents the condition and size and location of the tree. The third step is you document any trees on the site that are dead, diseased, dying, or hazardous. Now, we're going to rephrase hazardous to say currently hazardous. So if that tree is hazardous now, the arborist report tells us that. And four, you would subtract the number of dead, diseased, dying, or currently hazardous trees in step three from the total number of trees on the site, and the remaining number is the number of healthy trees on the site. You use this number to determine the number of replacement trees in step five through eight, if you are going to remove them. The next step is you define the construction area, which is defined in the code as anything where there's going to be a building footprint, a road, an easement, or any other structure. The next step is that you would determine the number and diameter of trees to be removed within the construction area, and based on the size of that, of those trees, you'd use column two of the code to calculate the number of replacement trees required. Next step is you determine the number of trees to remove outside of the construction area. Now, the point here is that we don't want applicants to remove the number of trees outside of the construction area, so we've got a higher requirement for replacement trees under that section. And you do a separate calculation based on column one of the table above. And then you add those two replacement numbers together to get your total number of replacement trees. And that's a clearer process for an applicant to understand, rather than try to understand my calculation in the previous code, which was actually wrong when you went through the process. The next change is that we had a cash-in-lue option that was in a separate part of the code, and we've put that as a fourth option, rather than it being hidden within the mitigation section. So on any development site, an applicant could choose to use all four of these options, so they could use a combination of tree preservation and mitigation, putting trees in a tract, entering into a binding covenant to replace trees, or choosing the cash-in-lue option. And so those are the changes that are proposed for 1741. Next section that we are proposing changes to is the natural resource overlay district, which is 1749. This replaced the water quality overlay district that we have, and is in compliance with Title III and Title 13 of the Metro Code. What we've proposed here is, first thing is, we are modifying the exemption for exempt uses under that, under that section. Soil tests were allowed as a use, but they only could be done with handheld equipment. And this would basically preclude anybody who wanted to do a subsurface excavation with mechanical equipment, such as a drill where they had to go bore through rock before applying for a land use application to ascertain land use, subsurface conditions. So, and the Public Works Department said, you know, this really isn't practical, especially when you've got the salt underneath or various other things. So they've asked that we change that section of the code to be more permissive, but the applicant would still have to replace the cover there to existing conditions. Second clarification is that the overlay zone does not preclude creating new lots, and it provides that if you create new lots in the overlay district, the building footprints for future structures within that overlay zone be outside of the protected natural resource overlay district. So what we've added back into the code from the previous overlay, water resource overlay district, is a provision that if you do a subdivision and you're creating a new lot in the overlay district, the natural resource overlay district be placed in a tract. That wasn't clear in the current revision. If you're just doing a partition, you would have the option to either place the overlay district area in a tract, or you could record a conservation easement or a covenant. So we've added two sections of code to clarify that process. Also, if you do that, you can supersede some of the lot dimensional standards in order to place your building footprint outside of the, outside of the overlay district, so that you don't impact it. What we have noticed with a couple of the mitigation planting options is that it requires the exact same number of trees to replace, to plant in mitigation as shrubs. And so we're ending up in situations where you have to replant 64 trees and 64 shrubs. The Metro Model Code planting requirement actually requires fewer trees and more shrubs, and that seems to make more sense from a canopy development standpoint over time. It's not that the burden on the applicant is any more, basically, it just makes more sense to have more shrubs as ground cover and then tree plantings in accordance with the Metro Model Code. That's a proposal that we're just changing out the mitigation planting option two to match the Metro Model Code. The next change that we're proposing is, if you do an alternative mitigation, which is, you're not following the planting option, you've chosen not to follow the clear and objective planting, but you're actually proposing something different. If you do that, you have to turn in a report from a qualified expert that shows that you're improving the functionality of the ecological resource there as part of your report. It's more discretionary, but as a application requirement, we added in that you need to tell us what the condition of the corridor currently is if you choose that option. We didn't have that requirement before. And in the old code, you had to say that whether the canopy, or sorry, the condition of the vegetative corridor was good, marginal, or degraded, based on the vegetation that was there. So that's just a, it's basically an application requirement if you choose the alternative option. And finally, we're just clarifying the density transfer requirements. So let me find that. Where are we? On page 149, under 1749-240, we added the stipulation that the standards for land divisions in 1749-160 shall apply in addition to the requirements of the land division ordinance and zoning ordinance. Provided that, you can change the minimum lot area, minimum average lot width, and minimum average lot depth, in order to allow for transfers of density. We also are proposing removing the provision that states that, oh, let's see, we're basically, the previous provisions said all other development standards, including setbacks and building heights, shall continue to apply when a density transfer occurs. That's not what we're proposing. We're proposing to allow more flexibility there. And it would primarily be in the form of lot dimensions and setbacks. And that's basically it. The change that we are going to come back to you with are going to do with code referencing within the document and some renumbering of the sections, but they'll remain where they are, so.
So a question on 1749-160, or definitely the last one, you just went through, the standards for land division shall apply in addition to the requirements in C land division. And it says they may be superseded in order to allow for transfer density. Is that a staff decision? Is that, it depends? Who makes that decision?
It would be a type-two land use application, yeah. Elsewhere in the code, it states, elsewhere in this code, it states that setbacks can be reduced from anywhere, from minimum down to zero, in order to stay out of the N-Rod impact area, you know?
Well, yeah.
You still have to meet your overall, what am I trying to say?
Your average lot?
Average lot size throughout the subdivision, but in order to meet minimum density requirements, you can discount the natural resource overlay district area to show that you're meeting the 80% minimum density requirement. That's a current co-provision, it was in the old code as well, yeah.
Okay, it just wasn't real clear to me.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure.
I think we'll try to clarify that language a little bit more before we get there.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be helpful. I mean, it may be some other point, it may be at some other point, but when you're, if you're just going in and looking at that particular code, it's not clear.
Yeah, okay.
So.
All right. Any other questions on 1749, at this point?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay. Next two sections are basically typos that, general commercial 1732, we're changing the reference to the MUE to say what it's meant to say, which is MUC. Any use permitted in the MUC mixed-use corridor zone with no maximum footprint size unless otherwise restricted. So this basically says that in a general commercial zone, you can do any use that's already allowed in the mixed-use corridor district. That didn't say MUEC, it said MUE, so that's changing. And in administration and procedures, the appeal period under 1750-190 sub-C is going to be changed from 10 days to 14 days so as to comply with Oregon Revised Statute 227.175 sub-C. And that would mean that after a notice, a decision is issued, or a final decision is issued by the staff, the appeal period is actually 14 days. And next section, 1750-200 sub-A, there's going to be clarified language because it was meant to say that any type 1 through 4 land use application would expire, sorry, can apply for an extension, that's what that is meant to say. So that will be changed. And finally, there's an incorrect reference in 1750-090H, and that was supposed to be G.
Okay. Okay. Oh, and the last small cleanup is minor partitions. There was a section that we need to really specifically discuss, a difference between single-family duplex and partitions and commercial for minimum lot size. And so that's, we've just never really segregated that they're two animals. When you do a partition on Lawala Avenue for commercial, we don't need to deal with minimum lot size or other specifics. So we have, we've added a new section about just single-family and duplex. And then the, at the last meeting, Colleen Mahalik came, and this is the request of downzoning property on Leland Road. She came and made public comment about properties surrounding her that were brought in by Centex and then subsequently rezoned from R10 to R6. And there was a couple of property owners that didn't take part in that rezone, and they stayed at R10, and they're kind of the smaller acre properties that ride around Leland Road. And she made a formal request to downzone the Centex properties. And at the planning commission's direction, I said I would come back with some background information. And I looked at the previous zone change application for the Centex, and they actually came in originally for R10 to an R8 request for rezone, and the planning commission requested to go to an R6. And so the application was re-noticed, and the planning commission approved the R6 rezone. It then went to the city commission, and it was approved. I've added two exhibits, H, well, H and I and J to your packet, and let's see, H is the Ms. Mahalik's sequential email that she sent in. Exhibit I is the minutes from the July 16th planning commission meeting, where the rezone is discussed. And then the commission report, which is J, which is when it was brought up to the city commission after the planning commission approved it. And a lot of the issues were related, I mean, in the minutes talked about the pump station, if you recall that, but the pump station needed to happen regardless of the zoning. So some of it was discussing how that needed to happen, and some of the requirements with the TPR at the time of the actual subdivision development. I didn't see a lot of discussion by the planning commission about the reasons for the upzoning from R10 to R6, but on staff level, I did know that, and we looked at that area surrounding West Leland Park. We had the R6 to the north of the park, which was a planned unit development. We had the Centex to the east of the park that touches Leland Road, that also was rezoned to R6. And on the far west side on, or Leland, sorry, because Leland does that term, but the far west side of the West Leland Park where it hits the turn of Leland, on the other side, we have the R3.5 medium density. So there was a concerted effort to provide a moderate amount of density around that park as a walkable amenity. And I don't want to infer that that was the reason the planning commission did, but I know on a staff level, that was a conscious discussion about how do we provide appropriate densities to serve that park? And that may have been some of the reason why the planning commission chose to move up, but there was definitely a conscious effort to rezone. And I know if you have some questions about the legal issues related to downzoning a property, I know Carrie is available, but it's generally not something the city likes to enter into for downzoning without really good findings, especially since we have a planning commission who approved it upzone just recently.
Well, I think, if you all remember, I mean, when we were discussing that, I think you hit it right on the nose, we were looking at the global picture of adding all this in and looking at it from a, you know, from 10,000 feet and saying, you know, wouldn't it be good? And then when the application came forward, I think, I think you had mentioned, well, why not, why, if we're doing this, why not upzone it? You know, at this point, because, and they were... You know, at this point, because, and they were amenable to it, and it made sense in that, I mean, why wouldn't it?
And I think previously, before, we had a UGB, urban growth boundary expansions and the Park Place and Beaver Creek concept plan, there was somewhat of a policy of kind of that concentric circle density reduction. But as we look into the concept plans and seeing the density that they're going to be bringing at the periphery of the city with the net 10 units per acre, having these little nodes, the concentric circle idea just seemed a little outdated, I think. So, I think there's something to that as of working within your existing UGB and how do you take best advantage of the land you have.
I think, if you're, at least I remember, the discussion that we were talking about it being on the edge of the UGB, and that was really where we wanted to focus our density. I mean, because we were running out of room to put that. And this just fit, this fit the application extremely well. And after she was here last week, I went back and kind of reviewed my notes on that, and that's exactly where it came from. But, and I would have, before I would consider downzoning, I'd want to look, I'd want to re-review that and really see is how that would impact it and how it would impact our ability to have more density in that area and why have we changed? And mentally, I have not changed my mind about where I want to see that density. It just makes sense. So, you know, I'm sure you're not looking for an answer tonight, but I, there's something I think we should review.
Just need to point out that these are the July 16th, 2007 minutes. I'm not sure, but they don't, I'm not sure if they refer to that decision.
No, that was the discussion.
Oh, okay, got it.
There was multiple meanings, but I thought these minutes kind of captured the majority of the discussion, not giving you more links to minutes. So, I, at this point, staff level, we're waiting for a direction for you. You can choose to not move forward on it and just not include it, and, I mean, basically address it to the extent of this, or you could ask for it to be addressed further. But I wanted to get that background information in the record.
Further thoughts?
I think it deserves that we look, in light of the economic situation that's changed especially.
I think if you're going to revisit this question, we need to give some notice.
When you say revisit, can you be a little more specific about what you're asking?
Are we reviewing the code changes?
This is her request to downzone the property, back to R10.
Okay, that's a separate thing from what we're discussing here, okay.
It's her specific public comment request.
As part of this legislative file.
Yeah, as part of this process. So, you can choose to say, yes, we agree with you, we'll bring that up, as we did in the last process, where you did some city-initiated rezoning. Where you can say, thank you for your comments, but we aren't going to pursue that property at this time. Or you could, or something else, you can go directly.
No, I was assuming that this was part of the rezoning that we had considered when we were doing the code change amendments.
You could probably rely on your previous decision that was sent to the city commission if you so choose to leave it as the rationale for why it's appropriate. And it's a very recent decision.
And quite frankly, I'm not sure that because a developer pulled out of a development doesn't necessarily mean that that's not really where, theoretically, where we wanted to go. I don't know that you guys, I mean, that's kind of where I want to get the feedback, because I, I don't know that I'm, I'm not, because I don't feel like I'm in a position to change my mind at this point, because economically, you know, it's going to happen again. We're still going to need room, we're still going to need development space, and we're still going to need that density. We still have to meet our Metro Code, not our Metro requirements. So, you know, we're running out of room. We really got to consider that. So, you're waiting for an answer, and I guess, you know, my feeling is that at this time, I don't see a need to revisit it. I think it's, I think we made our decision and forwarded it, and because of economic change with the developer, I don't believe that should change our long-term plan.
I would agree with that. It makes sense.
There, is that enough direction?
Thank you. And finally, exhibit K. Dan Berg sent the city comments this last summer after the record closed, and I wanted to get those in the record for you for this meeting. And then, if you don't have any questions, I can move on to the membrane structures discussion. I know, I'd like to officially put exhibit L into the file tonight. Those are, it's the email from Nancy Bush that I actually forwarded to you last week. And actually, we've even uploaded it on your agenda tonight. You can find it as exhibit L. So, just like officially add that into the record tonight. And as you call out the last meeting, the goal was to go through the issues relating to membrane structures, and then, I want, there's a consensus on that, come up with actual code language, rather than start with code language and meddle around with it, let's figure out what we want, and we can write code to address it. So, I spoke with Ms. Richter two weeks ago about membrane structures, and I know she's available to kind of bring into this conversation, and Nancy Bush was not available to come tonight, but you do have her comments. And then, I also wrote, I also copied down some of the talking points in bulleted form from last meeting. But I think the first issue I'd like to bring up in talking with Carrie Richter is she really is seeing that this should go in the land use code if there's qualifications to it. So, if you just want to say no membrane structures in the city, that's something that could potentially be nuisance, but once you are looking at setbacks or vision, or, that's really, you know, where you want to put it in the land use code, because as somebody wanted to build something, I'm going to go to land use code to see the restrictions on the structure. So, that was her suggestion, is if it's black and white, it can go in nuisance, but if we have some regulation on it, we should really put it in our accessory buildings and structures, part of our code, which is 1754. But she didn't see anything about regulating from the pedestrian level and obstruction concept, so legally, she didn't see anything that was a red herring. I don't know if it's easier if you want to comment, or if I, it's kind of odd that I'm paraphrasing for you.
You're doing fine, because you're the one who's put this together. So, I mean, I'm happy to add.
So, please, and if I crafted my sentence, you know, not quite what we spoke about, but, you know, she didn't see a legal problem with regulating the membrane structures based on not being able to see them, but the key was being clear and objective. And tarps covering RVs can just be not allowed, so that's not a problem. Or making them temporary, like, you know, you can put a tarp over something for 10 days or 20 days, but the long-term tarping of an RV, that can easily be regulated. And then, we could also potentially differentiate membrane structures for storage and membrane structures for the purposes of outdoor entertaining. So, that's really a devil in the details definition, but one thing I've always been concerned about is how do we, through our definition, regulate what we all think of as this membrane structure and the nice outdoor gazebo you get from Freddy's that you put up in June, and you have your outdoor furniture and your fire pit or whatever. Is it a square footage, is it material, is it the intent of use? Those are all things we can use in the definition. An intended use can definitely be in there. So, Nancy Bush is out there, and conditioned, you know, so if that suddenly gets big holes and is flapping, and that becomes a issue, in its own right, is a solid waste issue when the tarp no longer is, or the membrane structure, or the entertainment canopy is not meeting its intended purpose. Let's see. I was able to contact the Oregon Planning Network and talk to other planners through our lister about how they regulate these structures, and I got a definite answer from a lot of communities, which is not really our priority right this time. So, most either don't regulate it at all, some, like Sisters, is actually just enacting code to do what we're doing, which is not allowed in front of the building or the front setback. And I think Sisters has some additional things on the side, but I haven't heard from any community in Oregon that actually goes farther than that. So, we...
I would have thought, anything along the outer edge of a city, you know, where it's getting to be more rural, would probably run into this problem.
And it's not that they don't, it just hasn't risen to a priority level for them.
I did find a fair amount of regulation, east coast regulation of pods and portable, temporary portable storage kinds of things, but nothing like you're talking about in terms of membrane structures. The tarp attached to the house that hangs out and is tied to the tree, kind of thing. And I think really the question is, is this something that you want folks to come in and get permits for? In other words, do you want to know at the outset that these folks are doing this? You want them to pay $20 to get a permit? Or you want just rules, this is, you can't store hazardous waste outside, you cannot have a tarp with outside, with covering certain materials for a certain period of time? I mean, is it just going to be a list of thou shalt not? Or is there going to be some analysis that you're going to make in terms of this is an okay structure and this is not an okay structure?
Well, and that's a good question, and the answer is what we've been struggling with for this past year. And that is, we are, you know, from the citizen's perspective, driving down this, they don't, and have said it many times, don't want to see a big blue tarp or a big membrane structure in somebody's front yard with their RV parked under it, or their boat, or their truck, or their car. If you want to have that, and right now, we don't allow that. It's past the front facade. Well, but when you line up nine of these in a row and you have a long driveway, all of a sudden, now you have a tunnel. And we have found, we being the city, have found it, that it's difficult, because we don't have any, we don't have any code, that if they're storing behind that RV, they're storing, you know, solid waste, she can't go in and do anything about it. Nancy being Nancy.
But can we prohibit the solid waste part and forget about this tarp question? I mean, is this a question of nuisance-type material that is not on a concrete slab in a structure so that it is protected from the weather?
Which, correct.
So, we could forget about the whole tarp question, and we could prohibit the storage of anything of a certain size or of a certain type in a particular area, or at all. And I think from what our quality standpoint, that would make some sense.
Well, from a historic point of view, it makes a lot of sense, too.
Right.
And that's where it started, Carrie. It started in the historic district and has spread out. And that's the concern both Dan and I shared, was that it was in a historic home, or, you know, historic neighborhood. That's not historic. And we can manage most things if you want to put it in your backyard, and if I can't see it, then I guess that's probably okay.
Is that, I mean, are you talking about visual aesthetics? Or are you talking about some kind of, I mean, I think Nancy's concern is this stuff corrodes and leaches out into the soil and into the stormwater system and...
I think it's a combination, unfortunately.
So, maybe the solution is not, I mean, I think you can still do something with the RV covered, or the tarp-covered RV, but maybe this is more a question of storing junk outside without it being in buildings with walls.
Right, because you can't legislate that.
Well, I mean, we could if you wanted to, but that's a different...
Yeah, I'm not interested in what people have in their garage necessarily, but in a carport with no walls, that becomes an eyesore, or in fact, it can become dangerous.
And I think, and this may be a conversation with Carrie and I, is, you know, right now, we lump them all together as accessory buildings, and so therefore, we have setbacks to them, and we just, we can regulate them that way. So, if we don't consider that...
What was them?
A membrane structure. A membrane structure and a tough shed or a hand-built wood shed, setback-wise and, you know, size-wise and location-wise, they're all regulated the same today. So, if we don't consider them a accessory building, we'll have to kind of...
We'll have to create some new uses.
In our own separate dimensional standards.
It would be much easier anyway.
Yeah, I mean, you have a garage, you have a carport, and those should be defined separately. And then, you have this membrane structure, if in fact, we allow that at all, and that should be defined.
We have accessory building.
And an accessory building, and that could be defined as well.
And you could have, you could identify what this outside storage is, and this outside storage could be allowed for 60, 90, 100 days, 120 days, and if Nancy sees it out there for 121...
Well, I mean, I understand, I understand the complexity of it. I mean, it's gone, it's gotten bigger than all of us, I think, here, but I, we're trying to, I think, to solve a couple of things. And one is, we're trying to help where we need it, and that is storage of solid waste, because we have no idea how to control that, because we can't see it, or, which I think we can solve. I think by doing just what Carrie said, I think we can probably solve a lot of that. I don't want to over, Commissioner Groner would say, well, you know, you want to tell everybody exactly what to do, what you can and can't do, but we need to be able to regulate it some way.
Yeah, I think you need to protect the neighborhood is what it is, even though it's personal property, it's still part of a neighborhood.
Right.
Still have that obligation.
Let's go back to the, I'm always the what is, because you always think of, you know. So, we are regulating, I guess, when would you say it's okay to have 200, or 180, 200 square foot membrane structure? When would it ever be okay to understand the parameters?
But it's not visible from the street.
Yeah, from my perspective, yeah, it was not visible from the street.
For me, too. If it's in the backyard and...
180% of it's not visible from the street.
From the pedestrian right-of-way.
Pedestrian right-of-way. So, if you're on a corner, you know, that's part of, you know...
That's the pedestrian right-of-way.
Yes, and you can see into the backyard, well...
Just self-ahead.
Yeah, that's just the way it is.
What about from a bicycle? Is that a pedestrian right-of-way?
We generally say pedestrian height, which is generally at six feet, five, six feet is what we say. I mean, that's the view.
And in this town, we've got a lot of differing, you know, we've got a lot of...
So, if I'm at a, this is the abutting street, so if I'm at, I'm way up and I can look in, that's not, we're talking about, I look at the...
Down the street.
I look at the abutting right-of-way, and I walk that, just that abutting right-of-way front edge, and can I see it? I mean, that's how, to me, that's the easiest way, because if you get past that, it gets too subjective.
Yeah.
Here's a suggestion. I think we're moving forward. So, at the January meeting, I'm going to have bulleted points of what I think we're all getting at, and to kind of check, yes, 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 and then, maybe at the following meeting, actually create code to address it. That's reasonable.
And I think if we, as we sit and review this, if we have comments, we could...
Please email me.
Because I have some, I mean, there are a couple of things I missed when I read this originally, and I'll have to go back and...
Yeah, because I think, for me, just understanding those parameters, like, this is what we care about, this is...
What about the sort of RV covered with a tarp scenario? How does that fit into these items?
Well, I think it depends on how, we can, you know, you're defining membrane structure, and you define a tarp as not a membrane structure and that it can't be up for more than X days.
Tarp is a temporary covering that can't be up for more than a certain amount of time.
I would say that it's not a membrane structure, it's...
It's its own category.
It's its own category.
You know...
It's serving a finite purpose, and it's down after that purpose.
Somebody threw a tarp over something because of, and so, you know, you're trying to, yeah, I think we, that's its own category.
It's either 36 or 90 days, whatever.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, and if you're going to build an aluminum top with poles, I mean, that's going to meet a different criteria.
Well, that's a good thing you brought up, because at the last meeting, there was a question, is, we're talking about membrane structures, which is a definition, because it's a membrane material that is pulled over a support structure, which is not kind of that metal top. And do you see that as a different issue, and would you like to regulate that differently?
I don't know if it's differently. I know we want to regulate, and you know, the thing that's interesting about those is they don't require a foundation, you know? They have steel columns, and they have horizontal, you know, so they don't require a foundation, so it's temporary, you know, it's a temporary, it's not locked down to a foundation, and so it's sort of in a temporary category. And so it's sort of in the temporary category too, if that helps.
And which is a different, we've never viewed, right now, just in Oregon, to see an accessory building is something with a roof and, and posts. I mean, that's basically, we don't look at, do you need a permit? We don't look, I mean, permits are over 200 square feet, but we don't look at permit, we don't look at materials when it's under 200 square feet. It's, an accessory building is that definition, so...
No heist, no heist issues with that?
Well, then when you start getting building permits is when you are over 10 feet. And then planning, you, we allow that, the three-foot setback rule to allow you to get in. And we actually allow you to go to, I think, 13 or 14 feet, 14 feet. So there's a little discrepancy. But there's sometimes where you may just need a building permit because you're 11 feet, but you don't need any planning review. You can have that three-foot setback. So that's fine, all this stuff we're doing, we're just going to be reorganizing how we view, because right now, we just view everything as a, as an accessory structure. So we will have to come up with some...
So in my opinion, anything that is visible from the street should be either a garage or a carport defined as such and, and made of material that, that matches the house. You know, that's, that's what...
It's sympathetic with the house somehow.
Yeah, that's my, that's my perception. That's how I would like to see it. Beyond that, you know, I mean, if you've got a 10-foot height, you've got an RV under it, it's already going to be over 10 feet high. I mean, it's got to be. So it, it, it already needs a building permit and approval to do it. So, and we got a lot of those out there that have never gone through that process. Yeah.
And we do have a, we do have a way, right now, any building between 200 and 600 square feet needs to be compatible material-wise with the main house. And we do have kind of a community development director out to have metal, and that's usually in an existing kind of county-developed area that's kind of been out and all their neighbors have metal buildings. So there's a way, if the predominant development pattern is house and then a larger metal pole barn.
Right.
There's a way to, you have to have all your neighbors to sign off and support, but there's a, a staff way to get that, but you have to be in that kind of development.
Right. And that makes sense.
So it would be the same, I think we can view maybe those metal pole things in the same way we view metal pole barns between 200 and 600 square feet. You have to go through that same process where all your neighbors sign off and you present your, and you have to show where you are living, you know, where your, your lot is in the city.
And it still has to be behind the front facade of the house.
That, that won't change.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. That's all we have tonight on the code amendment. So if, you know, if there's any sections that you feel that we need to address or just even ideas that you feel that we're missing, please let us know because this, this really is our last chance for a while to get changes to our municipal code. So we have a nice opening right now, and I'd hate, you know, spring and summer come and you think about something that maybe could have been addressed right now. So please, I welcome any comments either out of hearing or through email, the, you know, topic you've been interested in, if can we address it through the code update process.
What's the next, I'm sorry. The next comp plan review? I mean, are we talking, what is that? Do we have that scheduled for, is it over 10 years or, do you remember? I don't remember on the comp plan.
It's supposed to be every five.
Five years? I don't, I don't remember. That's why I was curious.
I, I do know that we're going to be working on the TSP update this year, so it's going to be taking time. And we still need to potentially address South End and potentially find out the next steps for Beaver Creek when we find out that. So I do know we have some things in the docket ahead of time before we get to that.
Just curious.
The last time it was 82 to 2004, so...
So, yeah, so we're probably on track.
No.
Yeah. I won't be around, I'm sure.
We haven't scheduled anything to review the comp.
Well, I wouldn't expect to, because it was relevant. Like, I'm just curious, I don't remember what it was. I thought it was five to 10.
The last thing Metro came out with was nature in the neighborhoods, which we've codified to address. I'm not sure of anything new that's come out.
And we're not in periodic review right now for the state. So we're, we're compliant with, with state IDLCD right now.
Okay. Very good. Any, anything else from all, anyone?
Well, I do. Since this is my last meeting, I wanted to thank all of you for many hours of reading by senior staff. And I, it's been a real education for, I've been doing this for four years and I feel like I've almost learned a little bit. It's, but it's been a good experience and I really appreciated the, the chance to do this.
This can't be your last meeting because we have to have you back one more time.
Nope. I'm out of here. And I'm, I'm moving out of the...
We knew that, yeah. When's that happening?
Probably March.
March, well, we'll talk to you before March.
But, yeah.
Legal last meeting, I understand. Not unless we tie something in before then.
They'll have to be December 25th, you probably... So if you can arrange a meeting then, we'll...
We can work it out.
Okay.
We can do anything around here.
Well, staff level, we really, really appreciated your time on the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly. Thanks.
I'm going to hold my comments until a little bit later.
Okay.
You will come back one more time, I guarantee it. Okay, well, very good. If there's nothing else, then, anything from the...
We need to continue this...
Oh, yeah, sorry.
...January 11th, 2010 Planning Commission meeting.
Motion?
So moved. Second.
Good.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Dunn?
Aye.
Commissioner Lejoa?
Aye.
Chair Powell?
Aye.